Good morning and welcome to Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee number six for 2021. Before I take councillor's attendance, I would like to move a procedural motion so that we can include councillor Johnic in this morning's committee meeting. And I'm recommending to the committee that in accordance with section two five four K of the local government regulation 2012 and eight point six point two of council's meeting procedures policy, councillor Nicole Johnic be permitted to participate in the meeting via audio link. I'll take that to a vote of the committee, all those in favour, and that's unanimous and carried. Therefore, all committee members are present this morning. Do we have any declarations of interest in any matters on the agenda? Nope. So I would like to move a second procedural motion to move outside of standing orders for an acknowledgement of country this wonderful NADOC week. So I'll take that to the vote, all those in favour. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. So that's unanimous and carried. I would like to begin by acknowledging the traditional custodians of country throughout Australia and recognise their continuing connection to land, waters and community. I pay my respects to their continuing culture and the contribution they make to the life of this city and this region. I honour the elders, past, present and emerging, and I extend my welcome to the Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islanders people who are present today. For they hold the memories, the traditions, the culture and hopes of all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples across the nation. Ipswich City Council continues to support initiatives that build strong and active communities and highlights the contributions made by First Nations people. Spark Ipswich showcases and celebrates the arts and culture of Ipswich and proudly features outstanding works and achievements of First Nations artists Sally Harrison, Kylie Hill and Rachel Sarr. Whilst the NADOC Ipswich celebration has been postponed, several community organisations have been supported through funding initiatives. These include assistance with equipment that would allow them to work and deliver community-led initiatives. Community development has provided two Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander mental health first aid training courses that support the upskilling of the community that will in turn provide a strength-based approach when working with people in need. The Ipswich Library are launching a Songlines project that enables the community to create digital landscapes using stories handed down through generations. Council recognises the significance of highlighting the extraordinary talents and stories of our First Nations residents as it recognises the importance and position that arts and culture plays in the advancement of our city. Thank you. So we'll move back into the standing of the committee and moving on to item number one, which is the confirmation of minutes of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee number five, held on the 10th of June 2021. The recommendation here is that the minutes of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee held on the 10th of June 2021 be confirmed. Do I have a mover for those minutes? Thank you, Mayor. And a seconda? Thank you, councillor Madsen. Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? So I'll now take that to a vote. All those in favour, raise your hand. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
So that's councillor Madsen, Mayor Theresa Harding and myself in the affirmative, as well as councillor Johnic. None in the negative, and councillor Kunzelman will be abstaining from the vote. Moving on to item number two, the 2022 Ipswich Show Holiday. The recommendation of this report is that council accept the recommendation of the Ipswich Show Society and make the application to the Office of Industrial Relations for the Ipswich Show Holiday as follows. Day and date, Friday the 13th of May 2022. The name of the event is the Ipswich Annual Show and the community endorsement. So the Ipswich Show Society correspondence dated the 10th June 2021, as outlined in the report. So I'll move that. Do I have a seconda? Thank you, Mayor. Would anyone like to speak to a relevant council officer? No. And any discussion on the matter?
I just know. I wonder if there's going to be a spooky theme for, like Friday, Friday the 13th for the show, for 149th show.
Can't wait to see all the girls jumping out on the horror ride. So with no further discussion, I'll take that to the vote, all those in favour. And the room, it's unanimous. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, the Stronger Communities Programme. This is a report concerning the Stronger Communities Programme and to provide an update regarding the recent launch facilitated by Peter Kenyon. The launch event included a community-led co-design session resulting in 10 topics selected for Stronger Communities Programme for the year ahead. The recommendation of the report is that the report concerning the Stronger Communities Programme be received and the contents noted. Thank you. I'll move that and councillor Kunzelman will second that. Would anyone like to speak to a relevant council officer with regards to this? Thank you, Mayor Harding. And Mr. Poll will take the stand.
Thank you Chair. Mayor and councillors, Ben Poll, General Manager, Community Cultural and Economic Development.
Thank you through the chair. Obviously many of us attended the Monday, the 11th of June, sorry, the 21st of June session with Peter Kenyon, which is fantastic, and the group, the, you know, the community, over a thousand leaders in our community groups agreed to the top 10 items which are in the paper there. And we talked about a free monthly masterclass. How will that work? How will council bring this together and how will the masterclass work?
Mayor, it may be best, apologies, but it may be best for me to bring up the Economic and Community Development Manager to talk about that programme, given it's directly in her portfolio, if you don't mind.
If I may, Chair, well, Mr. Poll was there, may I have another question?
Of course.
Not directly related to this, but I guess just looking at One Nicholas Street opening up and a number of community meeting rooms are here in this building, when will they be open for community groups to utilise?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there's been a delay in the delivery of some of the audio visual for the meeting rooms within One Nicholas Street. We expect that to be resolved within the next two weeks and those rooms to be publicly available and bookable as of August. So just to give you a feel for what will be available, there are two dedicated meeting rooms within One Nicholas Street. There's also two larger meeting room slash event spaces that will be bookable by the public. There's also another event space, as we refer to as the Dandier Room, that's on top of the public meeting spaces that are already available in the Ipswich Central Library, of which there are four meeting rooms which are currently bookable.
Are there fees for booking these, the smaller meeting rooms for community groups?
There will be fees and charges associated as per the standard fee regime of council. Certain community groups, depending on their classification, I suppose, will have the opportunity to have certain fees waived depending on their classification and how they're using those meeting spaces. That'll all be defined and communicated and made very public and transparent before these rooms are available in August. So at the back end of this month, in July, all of that will be publicly available.
Thank you very much, Mr. Poll.
Thank you, Mr. Poll. I'll just call to the left and then Miss Cat Madsen.
Good morning Chair, Mayor, councillors, Cat Madsen, Manager of Economic and Community Development.
Through you, Chair, I'll ask the question again. Thank you very much for the great session on the 21st of June with Peter Kenyon. He's very inspirational. And obviously the community group leaders there had a list of top 10 things that they'd like to delve into and explore to strengthen their community groups. And we talked about having a free monthly masterclass. Can you explain how this programme is going to be rolled out and how do people get access to it?
Yeah, sure. So we are so stoked actually with how this programme rolled out because the 10 topics have all been voted on, as you say, Mayor, by the community leaders who attended that event. And so the masterclasses will be held in the evening in a similar time slot to the launch event with specialist, I'm not going to say instructors because that sounds very schoolish, but with specialist content leaders who can actually provide us with guidance. So for example, the first masterclass will be held in August about how to engage with young people. We will promote that through all of our usual social media and council channels, as well as distributing it through our community group networks who are far more effective than we are at getting the message out to those members. They will be volunteer-led, they will be free of charge, and we're also making sure that we are locating them around all of Ipswich. So we're not asking people to always come into Ipswich Centre or into North Ipswich. So we'll move them around.
Thank you, Councillor. Oh, thank you, Ms. Madsen.
Just another question. If these evenings become oversubscribed, as we saw the amazing turnout for the initial building of this programme, will we consider rolling out additional evenings for the community to participate?
Absolutely. This is one of the most powerful things that we can do to empower our community groups. And so we have no issues with having to upscale the programme and partner with all of our community groups throughout Ipswich to make sure that we can deliver these capability building skills. So that would be a fabulous problem to have.
Indeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I now open that up for any discussion. Councillor Kunzelman.
I regret that I was unable to attend that event on the 21st, and the reason I regret it is because I'm so strongly in favour of this programme. And I think that the consultation that occurred with 100 community groups is a very, very valuable thing. We recognise their contribution to our community and they will recognise that council is with them in contributing to their strengthening.
I agree. Thank you. You know, we've recently adopted the new annual plan and I think it's important for us to continue to celebrate the wonderful themes. And, you know, again, I'm very humbled to be the Chair of this committee because it is all about the fun and we get to celebrate all the wonderful things in our community. But, you know, vibrant and growing, you know, that's us. And building the capacity of our community is important. Safe, inclusive and creative, you know, that's the city that we want to live in. So, you know, tying it back to our annual plan, I think it's really important to think about that. The way that we want to portray ourselves as a city is really important. And through strengthening communities, you know, we're going to have such a wonderful group of well-trained people running efficient committees across the city. You know, the art of meeting in person is not dead and we're very much committed to keeping it alive and keeping people connected. So that's what I really love about this programme.
If I may, Chair, there's a saying that if you want something done, give it to a busy person. And I think when you find volunteers and the leaders and the office bearers of these community groups, sporting groups and so on, P and C groups, they are busy people. One thing I got to see on that night was, I realised it doesn't matter if you're the president of the local soccer team or the P and C, some of the issues are the same. So having that group come together and realise you're not alone and that we can learn together, I think, was, you know, this great vibe in the room.
I agree. Thank you. With no further discussion, I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? In the room, that's unanimous. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. So that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to the fourth item on the agenda, the Community Funding and Support Allocation Status Report from the 1st of April 2021 to the 24th of June 2021. And the recommendation of this report is that the report concerning the fourth quarter allocations of council's community funding and support programmes from 1 April 2021 to 24 June 2021 be received and noted. I'll move that recommendation. Do I have a seconda for that? Thank you, councillor Kunzelman. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on that? I now open that up for any discussion that we might have through you.
If I may, Chair, I'm very keen as we go through this, obviously we'll wait for the end of the financial year report, to how we can adjust the grants programme to better suit our community. And we've had some feedback from community on certain things, especially community groups who are doing fundraising activities. I ask you to please approach councillor and councillors to discuss those. We wish to make these relevant and applicable for our community. Every community is different. So please, if you've been rejected for a grant or you think there's some other way we could improve it, please contact your councillors and let us know. And we'd love to make sure that we make these grants really relevant to our community.
Yeah, I agree. It's important to communicate to the community that these things are ever evolving and there's always room for improvements. There's been a lot of feedback that the Community Development Office and the Grants Officer has received. And that constant feedback is really good. So I look forward to evolving that programme to continue to support our community through funding. Any further discussion? No. I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour?
It's unanimous in the room. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number five, the Quarterly Events Sponsorship and Ticket Allocation Report. The recommendations of this report are that council note the following event sponsorships were approved during 1 April to 30 June 2021. And B, that council note that there were no event sponsorship-related ticket allocations made. Would anyone like to speak to a relevant council officer with regards to the report? No. So I'll move both of those recommendations together. Do we have a seconda? Thank you, councillor Kunzelman. Open that up for any discussion.
The only points that I have to make is that not only am I proud to be supporting these events, it was also a bit of a rush to be in participation, to be a participant at some of these events. I went to the Winter Nats for the first time in my life and I had my head blown off, but I had an absolutely wonderful time. So to partner with so many great events happening, I think that that's a great way that we can continue to support our community. It's not always having to put the onus on council to provide, you know, a host of events, but it's partnering with those really important events that attract so many people and particularly those from outside the region have huge economic benefits to us, obviously.
With no further discussion on that, I'd like to take those recommendations to the vote, all those in favour? In the room, that's unanimous. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, Creative Industries Development Update. And the recommendation of this report is that the report providing an update on council's creative industries development be received and the contents noted. Could we please have Cat Madsen back to the stand? Just for a brief update. Thank you.
Good morning again, Chair, Mayor and councillors. Cat Madsen, Branch Manager for Economic and Community Development.
Ms. Madsen, this was a very, a very long process to get the right person in this job. And Trina Massey has been making a huge impact as outlined in this report. As Trina's direct reporting line, do you want to just give us a few highlights and how she's fitting into the organisation? But more importantly, how she's been received by the wider community?
You're right, councillor. That is the more important thing, how she's being received by the community. And one of the things that I'm loving is as I'm bumping into members of our arts and creative community in Ipswich, they are saying, "Have you met Trina yet? She's amazing!" And I'm like, "Yeah, yeah, we met Trina." The response has been fantastic. There is a lovely sense of council have heard us, that we are now moving forward on creating a creative and artistic industry and economy that works for the locals. We're not trying to mimic what has been done in other centres. We are a spine location-specific, if you like. Our aspirations are location-specific and are based on where we are now and where we want to go in the next few years. I think some of the key exciting pieces for me is the, Trina's already met with the Radif Committee and there's a strategic planning day in hand to review how do we allocate the Radif funding that we receive from Arts Queensland and how do we also open up other arts funding pathways? The other thing that Ms Massey has worked with is the RASN, Regional Art Services Network Business Champions. We're bringing them out in August to spend some one-on-one time with our local artists and creatives to help them with their business practices.
Amazing. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms Madsen? Mayor?
Yes, it's great to see the Creative Industries Development Officer had a feet on the ground six weeks ago. And I guess I just want to ensure that as she's going out, that we're genuinely consulting, not just informing, saying, "Hey, council's doing this," that we're actually sitting down and we're listening. I guess what kind of assurance can you give me that that is happening?
Well, I haven't been present to the one-on-one meetings, but I know that Trina is having up to five meetings a week and they are sit-down, often more than an hour. In fact, she'll come back from some of her meetings and say, "I just met with so-and-so and that was three hours." So it is an engagement. It is a listening process. It's absolutely not a, this is what we're doing. Having said that, we are also managing expectations. We, you know, we're providing guidance of this is where we are at, this is what we can do, but here are the other networks. And probably what I'm most excited about is that even when it's out of council's remit, Trina is working very closely to connect our creatives with other resources, whether it's state, whether it's federal, whether it's other practitioners, whether it's industry connections, to build capability across the board. But yes, it's a very strong engagement process.
We made a commitment at the end of the Creative Summit, end of last year, to have some type of board or governance structure to represent this very dynamic group, as well as some assistance on business plans. How do you go from actually making a living out of doing what you love? How is that progressing?
So we have a draft terms of reference for the advisory group that we're currently consulting with the engagement team to ensure that it's aligned with all of council's external advisory groups. We hope to bring that to you in the next month. In terms of the capability piece, yes, the first piece of work that those RASN business champions or creative champions, sorry, are going to do with the local creatives is exactly that kind of capability building. What do you need to take your arts practice to the next level? And that's going to be a bespoke conversation for each artist that they talk to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms Madsen.
Thanks, Chair.
So I'll move that recommendation. Do I have a seconda? Thank you, councillor Kuncelmann. Open up for any discussion.
If I may, Chair, I think this is, this work is vitally important. Our population is going to double in the next 15 years, so we need to look at other areas for economic development, but also that, you know, maintaining that unique Ipswich identity, that's part of that. And being, like you said, an inclusive, creative and a vibrant place to live. And I see this as a vital piece of work for us. It's one of those vital building blocks we have for our community. So I'm delighted to see how this is progressing and I look forward to the work in the future.
Yep, I agree. And I speak in favour of the appointment of Trina. I think that it speaks volumes about how seriously we take the arts community as an organisation. And, you know, work towards creating a safe, vibrant and creative community is something that's really close to our hearts. And again, it comes back to the uniqueness of the organisational structure here at Ipswich City Council. The fact that Trina is reporting to the manager of community development and economic development speaks volumes about the maturity of those conversations, you know, that will be derived, you know, through the arts. We're not saying that the appointment of Trina means that, you know, we're going to have overnight success and, you know, we'll be, you know, the biggest and best creative hub in Australia. But we have the platform to work towards creating a true economy out of our local creatives and building their capacity. And having those honest conversations, just picking up on what Ms Madsen was saying, I think is it really important to set the tone, what we're able to do now and what we're able to achieve, what our gaps are and what we need, you know, for future successes moving forward. I think that a really well-planned and thought-out process here is going to deliver the best outcomes for us. And to have, you know, a single touch point within council for our creative community, you know, what's better than that? That's just a great start.
With no further discussion, I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? In the room, that's unanimous. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. Well, that brings us to the conclusion of committee today. The time is 10.38am. We will reconvene at the next committee at 20 minutes to 11, sorry, at 10 to 11.